Good morning, everyone. The time is 10:10, and we're going to begin our public hearing. Today's hearing is a little bit of a different format than our usual hearings. It is one where we're going to gather information using the public hearing format in advance of publishing proposed rules. Generally, you're used to us having hearings on rules that are already published, and we're accepting comments, but this is sort of a pre-hearing to our proposed rules. So the general timeframe is we'll have this hearing. There's so many viewpoints when it comes to dispatch apps in the FHV world that we thought it only fair to actually have an entire hearing dedicated just to this subject. We have a number of speakers. I've got at least 18 speakers on the list, so we're going to ask everyone to really stick to focused arguments and a five-minute time limit so that everybody gets a fair chance to speak and that we can absorb everybody's comments. After the hearing, we'll use the feedback that we gained from the hearing, as well as the work that we've already done on the eHail side, where we've laid out a structure for licensing eHail apps, and that will be strong guidance in going forward on how we license FHV apps. But between those two sources, we will propose rules for a licensing structure for FHV apps. And then we will have a second hearing pursuant to Kappa on those proposed rules. And then the purpose of that hearing will be to have more exact comments on sort of line-by-line edits or issues that you have on the exact proposals. So I'm hoping today will be a really -- we know it will be robust, that's a given, hearing, and that everybody can really, as clearly and as focused manner as possible, give us their feedback, both practical -- a lot of people are coming into this with long years in this industry, and some are new entrants. We need the viewpoints of both. And we -- well, this is livestreamed, there's going to be transcripts available, so everything that's said here will become part of the record and part of our process in compiling a licensing structure for FHV apps. So with that, I think we can move straight into taking testimony, and first on our list I'm sorry, just one moment before you start, Avic. You'll notice there are no commissioners up here this morning, but that doesn't mean they're not following via livestream, and they're all extremely interested in what goes on, and will review the transcripts as well as have, you know, a review with us, a synopsis with us. But none of the commissioners were able to make it this morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Dan and TLC staff. My name is Avic Kabeza. I'm the CEO of Carmel Car Service and a board member of the Liberty Roundtable. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I want to start by correcting a misconception regarding the term licensing an app. An app is only a tool that people use to order and dispatch cars, just like a phone call or a website. For this reason, the TLC focus should be on the entity that owns the app, an important distinction that I will explain. If we agree that reservation can be made and dispatched through a phone, a website, or an app, and that what needs to be licensed is the entity that owns the app, then we agree that there is no difference between a four-hire base and an entity that owns an app. Regardless if reservations are made and dispatched through an app, a phone call, over the website, or a walk-in, both bases and app companies should be licensed as a base. Next, I would like to point your attention to a statement written by the TLC in the notice for today's hearing under key item license structure, and I quote, "Today, some FHV dispatch apps work with several bases via agreements." What the notice forgot to mention is that today, some FHV apps dispatch to drivers of different classes without an agreement between those bases, and the TLC can't do anything about it. I've recently complained to the TLC that Uber is dispatching calls to Carmel-affiliated drivers without an agreement between Uber and Carmel, in clear violation of many TLC directives, as outlined in the TLC industry notice, which I attached to my testimony. However, the TLC did not act against Uber, as you guys know, not because they did not want to, but because they couldn't. An industry notice is not a law, and Uber is not an entity that the TLC holds any muscle over. And please, let's not, you or the audience, confuse Uber, the entity that owns the app, with Unter or any of their other bases. These are two different things. That is why I strongly support licensing the entity that owns the app. This way, if now Uber, the app company, was to break the law, the TLC could summons and/or suspend their license. However, if in the name of innovation, the TLC wishes to allow an entity to be only an app company, that app company should either obtain its own FHV base license or enter into an agreement with licensed FHV base. My recommendation to the TLC is to take this well-crafted industry notice regarding app usage for higher vehicles, which I believe addresses all of the nine key items listed, make it a law, require an app company to be licensed, and condition this license on complying with the directive listed in the industry notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Allegriti? And if you wouldn't mind just stating, if you're speaking on behalf of an entity, the name of that entity.
Well, good morning, Commissioner Zoshi and distinguished commissioners watching via livestream, and of course, distinguished staff and all of you. My name is Michael Allegriti. I'm speaking on behalf of Denoch New York, Grand Hinter Schmecken Unterr, Wyther LLC, and most importantly, our over 15,000 driver partners, some of whom are here today, for Uber Technologies. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'd like to start by reiterating our keen interest in collaborating with the TLC on the staff level and working together. You know, when we entered New York, and this was four years ago, we worked with you to form a black car base and place it fully into the four-hire vehicle industry, the regulated four-hire vehicle industry. And we believe that today, there are effective ways that the TLC can expand upon its efforts to regulate FHV bases affiliated with apps, and in so doing, lift up the entire industry, including taxis, liveries, and black cars, to meet higher standards. We also believe that there's an opportunity to pause and to take a look at how our city's transportation ecosystem has evolved because of this partnership with the TLC, working through the base license system to regulate app companies, just like Uber. The results over the last four years have established a new standard of service for riders and economic opportunity for drivers. Let's take a look at the results of Uber NYC working through the FHV base system with the TLC. First, over the last four years, Uber New York City has provided comprehensive outer borough coverage with average pickup times of less than three minutes. We have doubled the average hourly earnings of drivers to $30 an hour. We've provided riders with an unprecedented level of transparency about their ride, providing drivers' names, license plate numbers, and base affiliations, and this is all before the trip happens. Riders can even share their ETA with loved ones to create a safer experience. We respond in real time to rider concerns. We don't care how small or how big the complaint might be. Any complaint that is submitted is replied to within three hours, but often within minutes. And finally, we've created what we believe is a new model for providing disabled New Yorkers with a reliable ride in northern Manhattan and four of the five boroughs. We're talking about slightly over 80% of New York's disabled population, and we hope to expand and plan to expand that throughout the entire city. So we believe that TLC should use this experience to pursue progressive measures that make these advances for the riders and the drivers the new industry-wide standard. What do we mean specifically? The TLC should hold all companies aggressively accountable for discriminatory practices, practices that have historically meant that some New Yorkers can't get a ride because of where they want to go, what they look like, perhaps the color of their skin. Every driver should have real opportunity to earn a real living. The current industry average earning per hour is about $15. We believe it should be $30. It could be achieved by reforming the broken taxi medallion system. The TLC should require that every rider who steps into a car gets a digital communication with their driver's license and vehicle plate numbers, along with a way to contact that driver and that base. The TLC should consider adopting new, tougher price transparency requirements to show riders trip fare estimates and fare structures. TLC should require all companies to be accountable to riders by requiring them to respond to rider concerns quickly and efficiently. And finally, the TLC should require that all cars outfitted to provide rides to disabled New Yorkers arrive within 10 minutes or less. Let's make that the standard. Uber wants to create -- wants to continue its partnership with the TLC. It wants to provide real customer service, real consumer protection, and real safety across all parts of this industry. But we recognize that fast emerging technologies pose new challenges and new threats. You know, in the last several years, the New York City government has prioritized the creation of a new tech-based economy in this city, supporting companies like Google, Etsy, Quirky, and each one of you could probably name 10 others. And it's been to establish a real presence in New York. And today, for example, Mayor Bill de Blasio just today is meeting with tech industry leaders at New York City's inaugural Tech Talent Pipeline Advisory Board. This is good for New York. This is ultimately good for the industry. The TLC now has this opportunity to strike the right balance between regulation, economic growth, and innovation by building upon the existing FHV license structure and requiring all bases seeking to utilize apps to obtain a separate license from the TLC to use apps. This approach would match how 22 other jurisdictions across the country have handled dispatch app regulation with great success. Alternatively, an approach that puts the TLC in the driver's seat in terms of how apps are run and operated would go against this precedent. It would perhaps stifle progress. It would ultimately hurt riders. We want to work with you on this issue. We want to help ensure that drivers have real economic opportunity and riders have the best experience possible. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Zoshi and Commissioners. My name is Natasha Avanesians, and I will be submitting testimony on behalf of Tweeps Phillips, the Executive Director for the Committee for Taxi Safety. I work for the committee as a public affairs consultant. On behalf of the committee, we want to thank the Commission for holding this oversight hearing today in relation to eHail licensing. We have also submitted comments that delineate all of our recommendations and concerns. Today should not be taken for granted. Today, the Commission has the opportunity to paint the future of what eHail means to all New Yorkers who utilize all the vehicles that you license and oversee. You hold the power to ensure the growth and prosperity of all segments of the industry. Do not allow for one provider to determine the future of transportation in this city. Do not impede on the opportunity for others to provide the service they are so proud to give. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Ben Kalos for introducing legislation for a universal eHail app, which would help level the playing field between yellow taxis and black car eHails. Oversaturating the market with an app that provides only black car, non-accessible service does not provide New Yorkers and visitors with the credible, safe, and wheelchair-accessible options. And in that fashion, the TLC and its most recently promulgated rules claimed eHail as hail. I'll follow with two main points. One, by state law, only medallion taxi cabs have the exclusive right to pick up passengers by hail in the exclusionary zone. However, because of the needs of the public, should be a threshold consideration, we do suggest a three-minute exclusive period of time for which medallion-licensed vehicles would have the right to accept eHails in the exclusionary zone before other four-hire vehicles can do so. Secondly, the yellow taxi apps cannot provide or incentivize drivers as other eHail app providers can do. The Commission must view the industry as a whole to ensure a level playing field so we can all compete equally. To conclude, I ask the Commission not to turn a blind eye. If Uber can invade our privacy, as they had done so publicly a month ago, there is no reason Uber cannot provide the portal of live trip data to the Commission so everyone can have the confidence that only licensed TLC vehicles and drivers are transporting New Yorkers. I ask you to help keep our passengers safe by holding all segments of the industry to the same standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dick Thaler.
Good morning, Commissioner Yoschi and panel. I'm Industry Consultant Dick Thaler. First, I'd like to say that I was delighted to just learn that I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Kabeza about the illegal idea of licensing an app entity. And I'll get into that a bit. As the proposed FHV dispatch rulemaking stands, it's a major competitive disadvantage for the medallion taxi industry segment and the FHV bases caused by violations of state and federal law and historical commission rules. An FHV app company providing passenger mobile dispatch trip requests to any and all licensed FHVs does not constitute a licensable entity for that purpose. The statement in the hearing notice that a licensed app company, quote, "allow FHV drivers to accept app-based dispatches through a TLC-licensed FHV app company," end quote, and not an FHV basis, contrary to historical FHV licensing policy. And how does the licensed app company provide workers' compensation coverage to FHVs responding to dispatches? Clearly, FHV dispatch app regulatory policy should be implemented through the FHB base license, not the proposed FHV app license. Under Chapter 59B, it's the base license that requires a base and its affiliated drivers to be in compliance with prearrangement and dispatch operations, including the use of app functions, under the 59B rule sections. App functions, like any software applications, may be provided by one or several software providers. So it's the base's responsibility under its license to obtain and apply app software functions for management and operation of prearrangement and dispatch functions in compliance with the rules of 59B. Accordingly, an FHB license approval should require compliance with the provisions of the following 59B sections, which incorporate FHV app rules of operation, rather than requiring licensing for each FHV app. That would be 59B 05, 08, 17, and 25. In the important related matter of the proposed FHV app license, compliance with the dispatch rule permitting a nonaffiliated base to dispatch a trip to a driver affiliated with another base, as long as the passenger is notified by the nonaffiliated base as to the vehicle, TLC license, and the base names, this is a violation of federal and state franchise law for non-co-op-owned bases, certainly for the black car and luxury bases that are franchised, but also for livery bases that may not be franchised because it is not a license requirement yet. In those cases, the TLC, by not requiring franchise registration in New York State, are permitting violations of the franchise law since livery bases meet the three requirements for franchising under New York State and Federal Trade Commission rules. Under the franchise agreements, the driver franchisees must only service work provided by the franchisor, unless it's the franchisor, that is, the affiliated base that approves the dispatch under an agreement with a nonaffiliated base attempting a dispatch. Subway can't sell Burger King. Essentially, as a result, a strong app provider, for example Uber, can have uncontrolled access to the entire pooled FHV licensed industry, and the affiliated bases would have no knowledge of these dispatched trips. And if a licensed FHV app company dispatches a trip, who would be responsible for sending the weekly trip records to the Commission? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I want to make one clarification, and I think it comes from the line under number one in our industry notice, which says, I'll read the last phrase, oh, actually, I'll read the whole thing. "Proposed FHV app licensing rules will formalize this practice and only allow FHV drivers to accept app-based dispatches through a licensed FHV app or through a TLC-licensed base under the same terms of use as the TLC-licensed FHV dispatching app." And I think that I should clarify one point. The Commission is not contemplating a world where you could dispatch through the app only. It's that if a base wants to use a dispatching app to dispatch cars, the dispatching app would have to be licensed by the TLC, meet a certain set of requirements, and vice versa. The base can only work with licensed apps.
If I could make a remark, exactly right. But all of that licensing should be through the base license, so when a base applies to a --
And bases that want to use their own app for dispatching would have to meet the extent the --
Or any app software should be licensed through the base license. That was my point.
Okay, thank you. Next is KJ Singh.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is KJ Singh from Maughn Insurance Company, currently President and Chief Operating Officer. I have over 20 years of experience implementing and researching technology from my previous careers, from help desk support to an IT director. Historically and presently, innovation and technology implementation is beneficial to the people and businesses of the city, the state, as well as the country. Whether innovation leads to productivity, better communication, technology is well carrying us forward. In this specific case, a vehicle dispatch app, at its core, it is a customer communication tool, ironically without speaking. In the past, communicating between a taxi and a livery could be as simple as a street wave, a telegraph, a telephone, an email, or an eHail. It is a communication tool. Regardless of the method or language, a New York City taxi must be insured. We are one of the few insurance companies in New York State licensed. Many are rated to write taxi livery business. We are one of the few that actually actively write it. I have over 4,500 vehicles I actively insure for higher vehicles taxi livery. Regardless of the method or language, the driver must be licensed and go through additional screening for the safety of the public. Insurance is generally characterized as a business vested with public interest. It's a private contract with the driver of insured with the private company. However, public interest is approved by New York State Insurance Department and additional requirements by the TLC Commission. It is primarily regulated at the state level, with additional caveats with the Commission to regulate a specific industry. New York State minimum requirements for an accident are $25,000 per person and $50,000 per accident. TLC mandates $100,000 per person and $300,000 per accident. That's four times the minimum requirement per occurrence, six times per occurrence, excuse me. Seating capacity is critical for us as an insurance company. On TLC's own regulations, vehicles with nine to 15 passengers require $1.5 million per occurrence. 16 to 20 passengers require $5 million per occurrence. This is for the protection, obviously, of the public, the passengers. Workers' comp requirements are caveats as well, too, for the yellows medallions, whether it's individual or fleet, same with the black car, whether it's individual or fleet. Black car workers' compensation fund is also for the protection of the drivers. Different insurance companies will participate at different levels of this risk assessment, whether $25,050 outside the New York City area or a $5 million per occurrence. Base affiliation is critical for us to identify risk, to make sure the passengers, the public, the drivers, and, believe it or not, the bases are protected. We do protect the bases when necessary without their knowledge. That's what we signed up for. That is why we at Maughn check base affiliation every day. I download them, we cross-reference them. I need to know if the vehicle is a yellow, a green, a black with workers' comp, black without workers' comp. These are critical caveats for rate, potential rate violations, potential rate jumping. A lot of misrepresentation as well, too. I'm not trying to protect an entrenched industry, nor am I promoting the greatest latest technology. The critical regulations of all taxi and livery must be considered. If all vehicles are to be considered equivalent, then the insurance requirements must be addressed and be equivalent as well, too. However, a 15-passenger bus that's hailed via a street or a phone call or an eHail, those insurance requirements are far more serious ramifications than $100, $300,000 coverage. A new communication tool is a great benefit to call a livery vehicle. It's a great convenience to the passengers and drivers. However, if the bases have regulatory insurance requirements, the vehicles have regulatory insurance requirements, I do request that the base affiliation be considered as well, too. I'm not part of any base. I'm not spokesman for any base. I'm not a member of any base, nor am I promoting an emailing app, strictly insurance coverage. Again, I'm one of five insurance companies. Base affiliation and the requirements for those bases are critical. So I do appreciate your time. I do wish you'd consider that in consideration with a communication tool, not so much a base. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Simon. I am a medallion owner and thus an interested party. With the introduction of the e-reservation, the passenger is basically receiving the same service as a taxi, with only the color of the car being different. It is of my opinion, in years to come, taxis and Uber-like cars will morph into identical forms. The definition of prearrangement to arrange in advance. The definition of on-demand, ready to travel. For prearrangement, how much advance notice is reasonable? And how much time do we give for a vehicle to respond to an on-demand call? On-demand service is a shorter period of time, as the terms imply. In order to codify the difference between the dispatch app and the eHail app, the dispatch app vehicle must take a longer period of time to get to the passenger. Prearrangement and on-demand service cannot be the same in terms of ETA, because they are, as per definition, different. So we need to make clear, need to make a clear distinction. The definition of prearrangement is an arrangement made with a time in the future, not the time it takes for a car to get there. The on-demand period of time could be defined as a measurement of time a passenger would reasonably wait to get a taxi. On-demand service could be anywhere from one second, when, let's say, a taxi is at a red light and the passenger jumps in, to the maximum amount of time the taxi and limousine commission would consider appropriate for a customer to eHail or street hail a taxi. If there are not enough taxis that are available in the timeframe that the TLC considers appropriate for good taxi service, then more medallions are needed. Correspondingly, the time wait for an e-reservation would be the maximum time allowed for a taxi eHail to make pickup. The amount of time would be the minimum wait period for black car e-reservations, and these two restrictions would be embedded in their respective apps. A prearranged service signifies that something is going to be done before the arrangement; otherwise, it would be considered on-demand. Since we are dealing with vague situations that must be made clear, here are some situations that a passenger might be engaged in after a prearrangement request. A cup of coffee, packing the bags, a phone call to a friend, cleaning the kitchen, getting the kids ready for school. Any chore or activity requires a certain amount of time. We could go and We could go into the ridiculous by making a reservation for 10 seconds later and call it pre-arrangement. I'm going to take my next breath, and after that, I'll be ready. But we can't be absurd, we have to be practical. My point here is what is the reasonable amount of time that these situations require for pre-arrangement to be defined? It is my belief that Paris has a wait time for e-reservations of 15 minutes. Exceptions could be made for this, such as allowing persons to request black car service faster by the old-fashioned phone call to the base. A person who is standing on the street with luggage is ready to travel, otherwise that rider would be engaged in another activity. If you're standing on the street with your smartphone looking for a vehicle, it's apparent that you are ready to travel, and taxi service would be the standardized option, not the black car e-reservation. Because black cars have proliferated and bases have joined forces to form large fleets capable of matching taxi pickup times, penalties need to be imposed for an early pickup. There should be limits as to how many cars a base is allowed to have, and restrictions on their ability to join together. When a base's number of vehicles get too big, they become huge fleets and are capable of mimicking taxis. There is a necessity for standard taxi service. Is there any city in the world that doesn't have taxis? The taxi must be the preferred first choice because they are the necessity and not the luxury, as an e-reservation is. To correct the current situation, we need, we need to back the medallions 100% to bring it back to life and put out more medallions to meet the needs of the public. Uber does not have an exclusive right to the e-hail, therefore, it is highly justifiable to do this. Thank you.
George Laslow.
Good morning, thank you for doing this hearing. My name is George Laslow, I'm from the Taxi and Limousine Research Center. However, I do want to make clear that today I'm actually here more as a resident of New York City, and I'm hopefully in support of the people who live in this town, as well as the visitors who use these services. So based on that, first, let me say that I did submit some comments to Turin, and I would like to ask you to use those as my official commentary and questions, that I would like you to consider looking at these rules. I'd like to concentrate on four things, two of which are related, actually, all four are related. First, having to do with rates. You had asked for commentary on search pricing and the rate card filings that are currently part of the rules for, for higher vehicles. If I understand it correctly, and please correct me if I am wrong, currently, there is no rules at all pertaining to the prices that can be set for a given ride on the FHV side. However, you do require that people submit a rate card to you so that you know what those charges would be potentially. I heard from many people in the industry, however, that this could actually be a farce because there are no limits on what those rates could be. So let's say technically that I'm a base, or I'm an app, and I'm going to tell you that my top rate is $10,000 per trip. You would accept that, and then, basically, if anybody charges anything less than $10,000 for a trip, it would be okay. So if I'm correct about these assumptions about the posting of rates, then I would like to ask that you consider placing specific restrictions on rates, and I think that many people in the city, residents, as well as members of the city council, have been concerned about search pricing, in fact, they had a hearing about it, and many concerns were raised about whether the 2X, or 3X, or 5X, or whatever the X is, should be looked at, and what is considered unfair. So I would urge you to take a look at this very clearly, and not simply ask people to give a rate card with whatever numbers are in there, but make specific restrictions. I would also urge you to take a look at specific conditions under which search pricing is not allowed, emergencies, for example, heavy snowstorms, whatever it may be, that may affect the public and reduce the choice for getting a ride, and discouraging, actually, people from being out there to give rides. So that's the, on the, on the, the search side, and the rate card filing. So currently, I would like to ask you that there's no ceiling, that you should have rules and regulations and guidelines about this pertaining to the rate card, as well as the search price part of the rate card. If, in fact, search pricing is considered part of the rate card, which is not clear to me currently, I would like to ask you to make that clear. Third, there has been discussion about dispatching cars from another base. There's one condition that I would like to ask you to look at very clearly, which is that a dispatch of a car from another base by a base should not be allowed if the base that is being dispatched or given the ride to is under some kind of regulatory demerit, if you will, if they're, if, for example, they are not allowed to operate, or they're in violation of TLC rules, whatever that may be, that should not be allowed, the cross dispatching should not be allowed if the car being dispatched by whatever that base is, is in violation of TLC rules. Fourth, I wanted to ask you to consider something which I consider to be an important subject, which is, I have found in the past that you tend to look at each of these segments individually, and not do impact analyses across the segments. I would like to encourage you, in this particular case, to take a look at the FHV-toSHL conversions, in other words, going to the green caps, which has been a huge success. One of the drivers I talked to said that her earnings have shot up, and is much, much better to operate as a green as a livery cap. However, I would like to suggest that if you e-hail, if the e-hail apps are regulated in whatever manner, you must look at the impact of the FHV-toSHL conversions, because why would if someone go through the process of converting from FHV to SHL if the path of least resistance is to simply become a, an app driver? So you're going to be undermining, potentially, what you're trying to do with the green program by what you're doing on the black car and executive limo side of the business. I think you need to look at that very carefully. So those are my key comments, and I think if I had to, the most important one of those is, please, please, in anything that you do in the future, do the impact analysis, because I think there are unintended consequences that you're not considering by being, putting on the blinders each time you look at a specific segment on its own. Thank you very much.
Diana Delamere.
My name's Diana Delamere, I'm a Public Policy Manager for Lyft, as most of you probably know. We're here today with three purposes. The first is to comment on whether there's any real need for additional licensing of apps. The second is to propose a solution to address any remaining consumer protection, safety, and accountability concerns. And the third is to help further the goals of innovation by identifying how apps and other technology solutions can help move the entire industry forward. The premise of this hearing is that the use of dispatch acts has grown significantly, and through these rules, the TLC seeks to promote innovation, consumer protection, accountability, and safety for the public. This is, these are all noble goals, and they're consistent with what we've heard from the Attorney General in terms of how to regulate these new industries, and how it's changing the way apps or cars are dispatched. So the first point, do we need an additional licensing system? No, in short, no. Those protections already exist and are applied to apps as to other means of dispatch communications through the base licensing requirements. As you know, we own a black car base that dispatches through the Lyft app. Lyft responds to the demands of New York City consumers for high-quality, on-demand transportation service through the means of communication they use most often, an app on their mobile phone. We worked with the TLC when entering the market and established a black car base at your direction. We follow all of the rules required for operating and holding a base license, including extensive consumer protection, public safety, and accountability requirements. Therefore, it is not necessary to create an additional licensing system to achieve the TLC's stated goals unless the TLC anticipates removing bases entirely from the dispatch equation, which, as you said earlier, that's not under consideration here. An app operated or contracted by a licensed FHV base is no different than a phone, radio, or booking website used by an FHV base. The rules for protection and accountability fall with the base, and the base is responsible for ensuring that those standards are met. The protections are already there. Further, it would be illogical and anti-competitive to require an additional license requirement along with additional standards on bases using apps, and not require those additional standards on bases using other means of dispatch. We could imagine, try to imagine what this kind of system would look like. A base that receives phone calls from customers might have to license their phone system and other practices for using the phone. How would that work? Would a standard script be provided for all calls, and must, must be followed by any employee receiving calls at the base? How would callers know the basis of the fare quote they get over the phone, or have a record of it? How would the base prove their telephone practices have adequately communicated critical information to the consumer? And would the TLC have to examine, evaluate, and license each phone system, radio, or website, and all of the individual technologies and practices involved with them? Asking these questions for phones and radios may sound ridiculous, but essentially, they're the same questions being asked for mobile apps. However, website bookings are not being considered, which we find a little bit strange. Any attempt to apply the idea of the additional licensing requirements and regulations to all form of communications quickly makes it clear that doing so would be impractical, if not impossible. This exercise also makes clear that rides dispatched via apps or other new technologies may already be safer and more accountable than dispatched communication options. Apps provide consumers with information in real time, detailed receipts, and options for communicating with the driver and the base. On the Lyft app, consumers can track the car coming to pick them up, see a photo of the driver they expect to arrive, check the license plate number, share their ETA, and identify all relevant base IDs as recently required by the TLC to ensure accountability. So that said, there, we would like to propose a solution to strengthen the existing protections by, through the link to the base license, if there remains concern about this. There's a simple solution to add a provision to the existing base license rules that explicitly makes each base responsible for ensuring that any means of dispatch communication it uses, whether in their direct control or procured through contract, is compatible with the rules required under its base license. Liability should be limited only to trips dispatched by that base. This is an effective, uniform, and simple solution to achieve the TLC's consumer protection and safety goals while not impeding innovation. The solution is also compatible with the rules recently enacted by the TLC to address dispatch issues without restricting competition or driver freedom. So another stated goal of this is to promote innovation, and if innovation is really the goal here, then we think it's important to consider that there's a broader opportunity to re-envision, re-envision how technology can transform on-demand transportation in New York City. The introduction of technology and app-based dispatch options have begun to expose what consumers and drivers really want. They want choice and flexibility. So here are the, some of the principles that we think can help guide reform to address the impact of apps on the industry and increase the value for consumers and drivers. This would not be limited to a licensing system, this is sort of industry-wide, new ideas and new standards that we could, we could start to apply. Driver should no longer be required to affiliate with any centralized entity. Ooh, those quick. The reality of on-demand services has moved beyond this requirement, and more opportunities exist without it. Screening and licensing of drivers could be directly performed through technology, saving hundreds of dollars in fees, enabling new drivers to be licensed more efficiently, and diversifying the driver pool to include, for example, part-time drivers. Direct, real-time communication between consumers and drivers enabled by apps provide more consumer protections and ensures public safety better than any set of one-size-fits-all rules. Some current options let consumers protect themselves through constant communication and information provided in real time. This is something that can evolve, if not constrained, and get even better, and that's something that the rest of the industry can also sort of benefit from. Consumers must also be allowed to make decisions based on their individual needs, including on what price they are willing to pay. In many cases, technology has already increased transparency and lowered costs. This will continue to get even better with competition, if not restricted unnecessarily. The New York City consumers clearly value choice and have chosen flexibility, flexibility price service, and large numbers. Okay, I'll do this quick, I'm sorry. Insurance requirements should also be
I'm gonna, just because we're on a tight timeframe, so you're gonna have to wrap up now.
Insurance requirements should also be sort of considered in light of new options, for example, for part-time drivers. There are many options for how to do all of this, it's important
We're gonna have to end now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Ira Goldstein.
Obviously, I'm not Ira Goldstein. I'm sorry, my office, we tried to make you aware that he was not going to be available today, but we'll be sending you written comments. My name's Michael Evernidius.
That's fine, thank you. Robert Agelilo, how do you say your last name?
Angelilo.
Elan, Angelilo.
Yeah. Actually, I have a written submission that we submitted last night, but I hand it up as well. Good morning, my name is Robert Angelilo, I'm with the law firm of Ark and Solbach, and we represent XYZ Two Way Radio. As you know, XYZ is a proud, longstanding, brick-and-mortar base in this city. We're here today because we believe, and XYZ believes, this is a critical juncture for this industry and this commission. For 40 years, TLC, give or take, has overseen the black car industry predominantly through the base system, and we believe this has been the best system. The base system protects the drivers, they have a vested interest in their bases, it protects the consumers. Your regulations, VTL requirements, all become part of the rules and regulations of the individual bases, and they hold themselves accountable to those rules and regulations, in essence, becoming self-regulatory entities within the industry. We don't think it's an overstatement to say that if the trend that we're seeing now continues, the base system is facing an existential threat here, and we think it's important that these new rules that are under consideration address that concern, and I was actually pleased to hear earlier today that it does appear that the licensing regimen being considered is through the base. We certainly would support that, and we think there are other bases that would agree with us. Now, we agree that new technology should not be shunned, it should be part of the development of the industry. However, we don't believe that, as it's currently being implemented, it protects the base system that has successfully governed the industry for these decades. What do I mean by that? We can look at the recent events in January, when five of six bases were suspended for violation of various TLC rules, yet that suspension of five bases had no effect on the operations of the Uber entity. They all funneled it through another car company, and they went forward as if nothing had happened. That could not happen with brick-and-mortar bases, and it is eroding the existence of those bases. And in that event, we saw a violation of at least two rules that we're aware of, operating as an unlicensed entity, and we believe one of those bases is actually a luxury base, started operating through a black car base, nothing happened. And those are TLC rules that were flaunted, and no penalty was assessed. So as I said, we're not saying that technology does not have a place in the black car business, we think that it does, but first and foremost, we think that the black car, excuse me, the base system provides the best mechanism for the safety of the drivers, the safety and stability of the drivers, and also the safety of the passengers. And we would urge the commission to seek the input from the brick-and-mortar bases in this city as, into ways to incorporate app technology into their operations, they're ready, willing, and able to do it, and we think that is the safest, most effective way for this commission to proceed with respect to app dispatching. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and the next speaker is Jose Altamorano.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, industry colleagues. Thank you for allowing me to speak on regarding today's topic. My name is Jose Altamorano, President for the Livery Base Owners Association. The livery base industry has embraced the use of technology through our bases and vehicles for years, and we strongly support innovation that protects and helps drivers and passengers alike. However, we believe that thoughtfully constructed oversight that protects the industry is critical to the safety of passengers and drivers across New York City. We have some concerns whether or not this licensed structure will be covered under, you know, let's say, a will be covered under, you know, let's say a base uses their own app. Will they now be required to provide another license on top of the one existing? We already, FHB bases are already licensed by TLC for the right to dispatch drivers. And we are concerned that if, we understand if the commission needs to license apps, however, bases already have that. So if they're using their own app for their business, we would like it to be incorporated within that already pre-existing license and not have to get another license. In terms of access to drivers, our industry believes that an FHB app or base must have a contract with the base in question in order to use the drivers of another base. We oppose allowing one base or an app to dispatch drivers of another base without an agreement between the two bases. Doing so raises significant accountability concerns and needlessly alters the current practice. We agree that bases should be able to dispatch drivers from other bases, and apps as well, as long as it includes an agreement. This practice has worked well for thirty years and has helped drivers maximize revenues and ensure customer service and reliability of service. We do have some concerns over refusals. The safety of our drivers is extremely important. And given that the recent increase of attacks against our drivers, they should be allowed to refuse a trip when the driver reasonably believes that their safety is endangered or insurance policy liabilities. And by insurance policy liabilities, I'm not sure about the exclusionary zone, but in the outer boroughs, we all have six passengers wanting to get into a Toyota Camry or Lincoln. And it could be four adults, two children. And they wanna enter into a vehicle that's only insured for five people. With the driver, that's four people left. I'm not an insurance expert, but I believe a child counts as a person. I'm not sure when. So typically, that would be a refusal from the driver. And that's currently not covered anywhere inside of the regulations. Another example would be when someone is either intoxicated or just out of their mind. In terms of price transparency, we believe that the passengers can be notified of increased prices, even through a binding fare quote at the beginning of a ride, but do not agree with the limiting of the amount for the livery industry. We believe that we should be able to increase prices when it is accommodating for weather or traffic patterns or limited supply. The industry should be able to compete on the same level as other FHB bases and vehicles. For app and base accountability, we agree passengers should be given a certain amount of time and information regarding the apps and the vehicles coming to. We always believe that the customer should have safety whenever entering into our vehicles. We promote that, and we always like to be within the correct statures. It is our hope that the commission will continue to listen to stakeholders from the livery industry in order to preserve the business and its driver and allow us to continue providing much-needed transportation to the residents of New York City, as it has for long decades. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Mazur.
Good morning, Chair Joshi, and Commissioners and panelists. My name is Peter Mazur, and I am General Counsel to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Board of Trade, an association representing the owners of approximately fifty-five hundred medallion taxi cabs, the agents that operate these taxi cabs, and many of the taxi meter businesses and brokers that provide service to the medallion taxi industry. MTBOT members lease their taxi cabs more than twenty thousand drivers each year and employ hundreds of mechanics, dispatchers, and other personnel. In sum, MTBOT members are involved in every aspect of the medallion taxi cab industry. Today, we urge the TLC to draft and adopt regulations that would license and regulate any application or technology used to connect passengers to vehicles for hire. Recently, the TLC enacted rules that would require an application used to connect a passenger to a medallion taxi cab be licensed. MTBOT supported these rules as we believed that licensing hailing applications that can be used in the yellow taxi cab industry would provide a level of accountability by these e-hail providers and would give the public a needed measure of protection, since the TLC can enact regulations governing the conduct of the entities that it licenses. We believe that the same protections and goals provided by requiring the licensing of hailing apps for medallion taxi cabs compels the TLC's adoption of rules and regulations for the licensures of apps in the for-hire market. First of all, such licensure and regulation is mandated by the Administrative Code. Section nineteen dash five-eleven provides that, quote, "The communication shall require licenses for the operation of two-way radio or other communication systems used for dispatching or conveying information to drivers of licensed vehicles." Therefore, under the Administrative Code, any system that is used to convey passenger information, such as pickup locations and fares, to drivers must be licensed. This would include apps that convey trip information directly to drivers or through a base. Licensing these communication systems is also sound regulatory policy. Drivers are licensed, and their conduct is regulated in great detail by the TLC. For example, drivers cannot refuse to take passengers to their destination. Drivers must not overcharge passengers. Likewise, the TLC licenses and regulates vehicle owners, ensuring that vehicles are safe and insured. Every business that provides for-hire transportation services to the public, whether it be a base, a taxi cab agent, or other transportation-related business, must be licensed and subject itself to TLC regulation. However, as of now, those businesses that link passengers of drivers to for-hire vehicles, that determine vehicle availability, that set prices, and that collect fares and added charges from passengers are not licensed or regulated. If a passenger uses a telephone to call a base, a passenger must be given a fare quote, must be ensured that the vehicle is licensed and inspected, and that the driver holds current TLC and DMV licenses. The quoted fare is the fare that must be charged. The driver cannot refuse the passenger, and the base must have provision for transporting passengers with disabilities. But the same passenger can use an app, and none of these protections apply. If the vehicle or the driver is not licensed or insured, the app company is somehow not responsible to the passengers and has no regulatory responsibility to the TLC. Fares can often vary at the whim of the provider, and there is no consumer protection whatsoever. The fare now is not, the fare ten minutes from now. More significantly, if the passenger has a fare dispute and has not provided service as expected, there is no request for the passengers since there is no licensed entity that the TLC can hold accountable. The passenger may complain to the service provider, but there is no requirement that anything be done. The failure to regulate transportation service providers undermines the purposes of the TLC and all the regulations that the TLC has enacted, since they are rendered virtually meaningless with respect to an important aspect of service to the public. It is illogical that all of the protections provided by passengers and the responsibilities of entities providing and arranging for transportation services should evaporate simply because an electronic app is used to pick up, arrange a pickup instead of a telephone or some other means of communication. Also, a licensed or regulated app can assist the TLC in ensuring that all businesses, yellow cabs, street hail liveries, community car services, black cars, and luxury limos meet the needs of the disability community and comply with TLC regulations and all laws governing the provision of accessible service. We urge the TLC to require any app or transportation service provider which links passengers to licensees be licensed by the TLC and subject to the same level of regulation as the rest of the industry. Such regulation would be consistent with the law, provide needed consumer protection, and fulfill the mandate of the TLC to develop and implement a comprehensive transportation plan as mandated by the city charter to ensure that all passengers in licensed TLC vehicles receive safe, reliable service, are charged fair prices that are known in advance of the trip, and have protections in the event of a dispute. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tarek Ma.
Good morning. Tarek Ma, the General Manager of Dial Seven and a member of the Livery Roundtable. It seems that, if I run a tally of everybody's opinion and speech today, it seems that there's an overwhelming consent that if you're dispatching, you need a dispatch license, regardless of what method you use to dispatch. Very much similar to if you are an architect, you need a license. Whether you use a pencil and a ruler, or you use AutoCAD. Same thing as a CPA. If you today, you're gonna be a certified public accountant. Whether you use a calculator, or a ten-key, or QuickBooks, you still need to be licensed to operate, to provide the service. Same thing if you're a doctor. Whether today you use a scalp, or use a laser, or you see the patient in person, or you see the patient through a mobile app three miles or thousands of miles away, you still need a license to conduct your business as a doctor. If we keep with the same concept, I believe we have existing license scheme today that allows us to do everything we want. Provide the production of the industries, the business, and the consumers, and have it clear, very simple understanding that has been proven safe and consistent, and surprisingly, still open for all today and future technologies if we can just follow the same concept and principles that were intended in our rulesmaking, our laws, federal, state, and city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, and pardon me if I mispronounce his name, Ranfon Anrojobo. Okay. I'll call the next speaker Jack O'Moyn. Sonam Palior. Okay. Mohammed Ali Fahad.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Mohammed Ali Fahad. Taxi driver, limo driver, bus driver, and also now I'm an Uber proud driver. My driving history in ten years started with the stretch limousine. When I drive in taxi cab, ninety-five percent of my passengers don't know what is New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission. I'm the end product in this business. They're gonna look at me. They're not gonna look at what's Uber is, what's Dial Seven is, what's Carmel is. I'm gonna go through the steps. Number one, licensing structure. Its app, Uber app, is the same like you have Expedia, JetBlue, or Chase Bank app. They are regulated by Federal Board of Trade. They're already incorporated. They are in business. People book the black car limousines through Expedia, hotels.com, and they get the limousine. If you have to regulate Uber, you have to regulate them. Access to drivers. Rules surrounding what group of drivers TLC can dispatch. Everybody who's licensed by New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission to drive the vehicle is a driver. So they can drive a taxi, a black car, a luxury limousine, or the Uber cab. Refusals. Interestingly, in Uber, the refusal rate is a lot more less than the yellow cabs. And if TLC go through its data, since Uber in business, the refusal complaints should be down in the yellow cab. So refusal is so transparent. They know what is going on. Accessibility. Wheelchair accessible. I think Uber still, they are working on it, to doing the accessible cabs on the road so they can dispatch through the app. Minimizing driver distraction. Yeah, that's the most important. It's a public safety issue. It's a driver safety issue, the issue of the people that's walking on the street. Hailing a cab is more dangerous than requesting on the app. People come in the middle of the street. I'm telling you, the real time. I drive, I know, and it's a hazard. It's a living hazard. They come in the middle of the street to hail the cab. In the nighttime, they're partying, they're drunk, and we have accidents. And New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission, see, it's on the news everywhere, every year. People got killed. So it is on the safe side, and I give Uber a credit for that. They are reducing the fatalities. Privacy and security. Yeah, they have, you know, the data, what I see every day is how many trips I do, how many, how much money I make. So it's transparent. I know the trip data, but I don't know if they're doing with you or not. Then it's trip records. They do have the records. Price transparency, the search pricing. That's everybody talk nowadays. The search pricing in this Taxi and Limousine Commission has been for years. I worked for a farm-out company, which does work for Dial Seven, Carmel, NYC Two-Way Radio, all these luxury limousine bases. You used to drive stretch limousine. They do have search pricing. In a specific time, it's been in for years. Like from four PM to seven PM, you go on Dial Seven website. Going to the JFK airport, the rate is different. After seven or eight PM, the rate is different. So it is there. But now, with Uber, everybody knows the search pricing is there. App and base accountability. Yeah, that's the part of the New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission there. I don't know about how the basis works. I just drive. I'm a licensed driver. I do all, satisfy all the requirements for the TLC to drive for a luxury limousine base or black car base. Thank you very much. These are my experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last scheduled speaker. Since we're here, does anybody else wish to be heard for the record? Okay, somebody's approaching the... I'd ask you to state your name for the record with whom you're affiliated, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Thanks.
Yeah, yes, hi, good morning. I'm Commissioner. My name's Carlos Sanchez. I'm the owner of NYC Green Car Service. I haven't catched the whole meeting today. I had a personal thing. But I haven't heard nobody talk about the actual implementation of these applications. The applications that are right now in the market, they all take away the vision of the driver away from driving when a call comes in when he's driving. He gets a beep, not like a two-way radio, that it's an audio call that he receives. What he gets is, he gets a beep, and the driver actually has to look away while he's driving with the passenger in the back to see if he's gonna take that call. Some apps actually do it that they won't receive the next call until the vehicle is to a full stop. But almost all of them, while the vehicle is still in motion, they could receive another call that he has to look away to tap his tablet or his screen on his phone to receive the next call. I think that that's dangerous, not only for the driver, but for the passenger too. And I've heard, and I haven't heard nobody up to now talk about that practical implementation of most of these apps. If it's an audio, if it's an audio that they receive that they could hear, that they don't have to look away from the road while they're driving, I think it's okay. But right now, that's not how it's working. They all have to tap a screen, and I think that's incorrect for security purposes, for insurance purposes, for everything. So it was just pretty short, so it's just that. Thank you, and have a nice day, and have a great weekend, everybody.
Thank you. Looks like I've got several others. Did you wish to speak, sir? No, we'll take the other two.
Good morning, chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Beris Ford Simmons. I'm with the Taxi Workers Alliance, but I also have a very unique position as an dialysis patient. And I have to do dialysis three times a week, so I'm here representing those people who takes the accessible vans and the dialysis center itself. I think that there should be an expansion of licenses to medical centers because of my experiences, and I hear the complaint from some of the people who are on dialysis, who have gotten... As a matter of fact, I have a letter that I was supposed to present to you, but I didn't bring it, was actually a guy in a wheelchair who was basically thrown out of a wheelchair accessible van and basically was late for his dialysis. And when there's someone who is late for dialysis, it backs up the system at the dialysis center. So I would ask the Commissioners to pay attention to the wheelchair accessible cabs that are coming out and with the dispatch system. Short and sweet to the point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, yes, the first person there, and we'll get you next.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Raed Abu Shafra. I'm a driver with Hinterbase, which is one of the bases of Uber technology. I heard, you know, a couple of people here today. Um, I, I heard, you know, a couple of people here today, um, and I want just to focus on the fact that why I drive for Uber? Why Uber, why not an other black car base, and why not, I'm not driving for a yellow cab, uh, uh, car? Uber for me is a zero percent stress. I used to work for, uh, another basis back in two thousand and ten, and it was really a full-time stress work. You need to beg the dispatcher, you need to be a friend with him to give you a good job, you, it, it's a lot of stress, and it was not really healthy for me. When I switched to Uber, and I took a chance, because back in two thousand and eleven, it was a new base, uh, I really didn't know what is Uber, I just heard that it's just an app, and there is no human, uh, favoritism. So I switched to Uber, and I really had really great experience, zero stress, no, no, there's no favoritism, nothing, uh, really bad. It was really a healthy way to drive in New York City. Of, of course, uh, we still have problems like traffic, a lot of private cars in the city, you can't park anywhere, sometimes it's hard to pick off from Times Square area, et cetera, but the Uber system is really good. That's the main reason I'm driving for Uber until now. Why not the yellow cab? Well, I'm paying for the, uh, T L C medallion or diamond, uh, five hundred and fifty every two years. If the medallion, yellow cab medallion is gonna reduce the price to five hundred and fifty, I'm ready to switch right now. I mean, why this crazy amount, eight hundred thousand? I mean, they complain of the fact that they're, they're, they're drivers, they're coming to Uber, and they still, you know, their prices are crazy, they have a lot of stress. Friends of mine who, who work, used to work for a yellow cab, in, uh, when it's not busy, they pay, for example, like five hundred, six hundred a week, and when it's busy time like, uh, end of the year, they higher the prices. Now they have to pay their consequences. Thank you so much for him.
Thank you. And, uh, the gentleman who's standing back there.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, friends, I know friends. Uh, my name is Anibal Torre Negra, and, uh, presently I'm working with Uber, not for Uber, with Uber. So I have a very good experience, you know, in, uh, working with Uber. I lost my job for twenty-five years, so I went to drive the yellow cab, and like, the gentleman before me was telling, serious stress. You know, I feel like, you know, people feel mostly change. We have to embrace change. You know, and I don't think Uber is in the business, or we are in the business, to take nobody's bed out of the hand. You know, everybody, you know, deserve a piece of the pie. It doesn't mean because I have this new restaurant here, I cannot open a restaurant. If I follow the rules, if I follow all the requirement, why shouldn't have it? The only thing is, you wanna compete with me, you have to come with a better service, a better product than mine. You know, because everybody can complain about this and this and that, and everybody's pushing, pulling the cord for their own side. Yes, I understand that. You know, but honestly, pr, uh, transparency, you know, safety, you know? The way we, we do the business, it's not us that we making the choice of cho, choosing Uber or yellow cab, it's the people out there. The people, and that's one of the best things that has happened in New York right now, that we have Uber, and we see a lot of feedback from the customers, that's what count, that's the people's feeling me, that's the people's feeling everybody who's there. We don't buy those. Uber says, "Sorry, charge pricing?" Yeah, this is what it is, take it or leave it. And like the gentleman said before, it's already there, and every, every business, supply and demand. That happen not only with Uber, everywhere. In the food industry, of E and whatever you mentioned, the, the, the airlines, hey, it's a, it's this. So that's, you travel now, you don't travel now. So, but this is very good for me, I'm, this guy got a, I couldn't afford to get a yellow cab. You know, I went to apply for to, to drive a limo, but they were charging me too much. When I put the numbers together, I said, "You know what, let me get a car and go to Uber." And I, I think Uber is following, we comply with the rules. If not, I don't like to do nothing illegal. So it's something, I think you are here to, but we made the choice, riding this or riding this, is the custom. We gotta think about the customs. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think there's one more gentleman there. Yes?
Good morning, chairperson and the members of the panel. My name is Shafkar Chowdhury. I'm president of Elite Limousine. Uh, I have been in the taxi industry, taxi and limousine industry since nineteen seventy-three. I started as a driver, uh, became a taxi broker, as, started as a taxi driver, became a taxi broker, became a taxi medallion owner, drove a black car, now own a black car company. Uh, in nineteen ninety-four, we, we, we were the first company in the city to have our own dispatch system. Uh, and in two thousand, we started a, a dispatch terminal in the car which we owned, which we designed ourselves, and we installed in the cars. Our main objective was that it should be a instrument, it should be a device, which is safe to use for the driver, does not cause destruction. Uh, it should be large in size, not a small telephone, it's a, it's about eight point four inch L E D., which stays in the car with the driver and stays on all the time, driver can see, he doesn't have to bend to see while he's driving. So, mm, now we have our, our own app, which works with the same dispatch system, we don't dispatch to any other cars except our own cars. Uh, my purpose of coming here and, uh, and trying to give you information is that one of the main concerns should be the safety of the driver and the safety of the public, which these small apps do not, do not provide. The unit should be fixed in the car, and all app, all other bases, whether Uber or Lyft, they should be required with the same rules which we have lived with. Uh, for example, franchise rules. We are required to file every year franchise, uh, prospectus with the New York City Attorney General. They should be do that. We should have, they should have parking for the car, which they are saying, uh, they have. We have, uh, two hundred car parking, uh, with our base, uh, since day one. Uh, similarly, all other requirements which, uh, which we are forced to do, not forced to do, we are willing to do, they are good for the safety of the public and the safety of the driver, they should all be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that was it.
This concludes our public meeting. Oh, okay. You'll, you'll close it out.
Yes, in good fashion, as only I can. Uber is public enemy number one all across the globe for good reasons.
Can you stick to the topic at hand, F H V licensing app structure? Thank you.
But the people from Uber made some statements, they're invasive, they lie, they're arrogant, they profess their interest in public safety and driver income, it's all B S. They don't have, they don't check the insurance, they don't have their cars inspected, you don't know whether you're, you're riding a counter or not.
Can I ask you to stick to the topic, please?
Oh, this is more entertaining this way. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will end our public meeting at eleven thirty. Thank you very much.